That's true.
She had an episode last night, they said it was her under. She had an episode last night, they said it was her under. He was gonna give her monitor where, you know, we got down to Highlander, you know, where the four main, pretty much, we told him, off of John's office, so we got down there and she grabbed my face. She said, "You gotta get me to the ER," and I ain't gonna like it. But, I mean, we'd go in him and his office, right, pretty close to the ER, so we got there pretty quick. We got down there and she was just out in the heart, pamp, through her chest, they gave her nitro.
Thanks, sir.
Two nitro pills, coughed it down, she had no gas. That night, the same thing, they gave her some more nitro. Friday, they just started her off with nitro.
Hello.
Hi.
Could I possibly get him to sit here?
Very quiet.
He's in quite a bit of trouble here.
Must be.
It actually, uh, about twenty-five acres before launch out, actually, it took probably the just gonna have to press the big arms, because he's got a lot of beans on the twenty-five acres. But, he's got enterprise, he's just for everything down together, so probably what's gonna happen, he should probably get all the heat out of there. He's had a loss, even with the twenty-five acres, it's walked out. And I think that's gonna happen everywhere, you know.
I wanna get you farther up in the front. I think you should.
We had a thing last night, and the monitor they sent our home, it didn't work, so.
Didn't work?
No. So we had to, uh, what's I called the heart doctor, and he was called back, so. He's got nitro plates with, uh, that brings. I'll sit beside you. Yeah. We're pretty, yeah, we're pretty good size.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Hi. Now my cigarette's on the background, I get a look at everybody. Okay. No, I think I'm cleaning windows. I went to the clock brock, I thought it was a little bit after four, I just got out of the shower. Here you go, time is out. So, babe, I got all of them.
Everybody turn it down, man.
I'm sorry?
Turn it down.
Oh, I did, baby. It was, it was almost eighty, so I put on seventy. If y'all get too cold, just let us know.
Yeah, I know, you're a music.
I know, I know, but I don't understand.
It's awful, I mean, my brain, yeah, I'm.
No, no, I wish I could.
Yeah.
Here, Margaret?
Yes.
Mark Jones?
Here.
My Parkus?
Here.
And then Lashford, here, Jerry Mettis?
Here.
Okay, first of all, thank you for that presentation by Officer Josh Blackbuck from Sheriff's Department. He can present something to several officers.
First of all, I'd like to thank everybody that came to this time, I don't really read. Give you a little background, this week, uh, last week, actually, Friday, he had three inmates tried to escape from Arjita by tumbling out of armorless walls. The reason why I'm here is Matt actually awarded that for us. He had to pull into jail, uh, heard it happening on the walls, and noted our jails had to do that. So, uh, I felt like we needed to do something for him, um, just being on his toes. Well, we got a certificate of commendation for him, and it says, this certificate is to commend Matt Sergeant for the performance above and beyond the call of duty. On the morning hours, September fourteen, two thousand thirteen, Officer Matt Sergeant demonstrated initiative, enthusiasm, and professional ability in his performance as a police officer of the fellow police department. Officer Sergeant Thor had the attempt to escape the three inmates to Orange County Jail, Sheriff's Department, and wanted to take the time on behalf of the Orange County Sheriff's Department to recognize the Officer Sergeant for his due diligence. Like I said, a lot of times you don't hear the good things when you do, and this is one of the good things that this young officer does, and I'm very, very proud of him, and I think very you should be too.
We have minutes from September third, February thirteen.
You want one to get outside?
There is one left, huh?
Here, Margaret?
Yes.
Mark Jones?
Yes.
My Parkus?
Yes.
And then Lashford? Yes. Jerry Mettis?
Okay, I guess we're not gonna be able to deal with inside columns, uh, this evening?
Actually, I do have the information, I'll tell you that you're, you're right.
Okay, can we do that, we're gonna do that, uh? I'm not, if you're done, we can come back.
Is Mr. Denzil here?
Yes.
Okay. And then, uh, Mr. Darty, is he here? Um, I'm afraid so, that is too long.
It's good. We'll come back.
That's okay, this, this is.
This month, our department applied for, uh, grant funding through the Orange County Commissioner's Supporting Organization. This is the help fund the rest of the K nine program that we're starting up. It's a little under four thousand dollars. I think they make a decision on that at the end of this month, and so we should hear that. Also provided, uh, two quotes on the fencing needs to be put up at the police department. One's through, uh, DNL vinyl, the other one's through John Collins. Both are low. They're both, uh, gonna provide the same work, put up the same material. So, uh, Collins says, would say, I would recommend the cheapest one of it. Out of them, they both can start immediately after getting the material. I believe, uh, DNL's quote is for seventy-five, fifty-two, ninety-eight. John Collins' quote is sixty-eight, forty-eight. I believe they both, uh, also provided pictures of where the fencing will go around. Both will have two, uh, two gates on both sides of the building for access points, and also a man gate on the north side of the building.
So you, uh, you said, uh, you said, your quote was for not sixty-eight, no?
Yeah, it said, uh, it says sixty-eight, forty-eight.
Underneath that, okay, underneath. There it is. Actually, on DNL, you can take off the tax, because the tax is in. Yeah. Here's the sixty-eight, okay.
Yeah, I see, that's a good point. Uh, make it around seventy-one, seventy-one.
Yeah.
How quick are you wanting to get this started? We'll get ready to start forcing that fully until we get the fencing message through here. The only reason I ask is to take those up under advisement.
Is this correct, this quote for fourteen thousand?
Well, that, that, that right there is, uh, if you're looking at the grants that we applied for.
Yeah, that's this one.
Right there is, that top one is the DNL, and then under that one, you should have the John Collins.
What's considered suspicious, can you discussion here? You wanna move on this project?
Start getting ours in and? Yeah, I mean, we can't, before we start implementing the, the ordinance, can we get that up, because we can't ensure their security of vehicles, and we have to pay and fence them. Yeah, I mean, we can't, we'll have to wait on that if you're forcing it fully through.
I'll second that. Here, Margaret?
Yes.
Mark Jones?
Yes.
My Parkus?
Yes.
And then Lashford? Yes. Jerry Mettis?
That's all I, so, uh, the K nine, the kennel we was gonna go through, for the K nine, he had a family emergency, so he postponed it indefinitely. So we're looking at other kennels in the area right now, so he did not attend the training.
Did you say when you expect to do that?
Yeah, they, they make a decision on that, I think, at the end of the month.
You got any questions, really?
I'd, uh, I'd like to thank you and your officers this weekend, especially guys in real, I've never heard, uh, Rob was asking people, was texting me, and giving guys compliments, and he was supposed to be in a dump, but he didn't have us, he got his digital foot patrol, and a lot of people appreciate that, so thank you, guys.
Yeah, and I'd also like to thank Sergeant for his job, and for the jail escape. I'm proud of you.
Yeah?
Yes.
Well, I think our firefighters deserve just a little compliment, too, with the police from this weekend, finding the little boy, helping to find the little boy, or finding the little boy, or whatever. We got good police and fire, we're blessed.
But I have, doesn't it take longer to set up? Actually, if you're ready to start budgeting, there's a couple things we can touch on, like before we start it, but, uh, one of the things is, we discussed in the past, that this hydro fencing fee that we have in the budget, seventy-five, walking off, and actually, um, moving it and putting it back onto the utility bill that it was, was had, or was not had, and I think you guys probably should really consider doing that to break the budget, the best we can, right, right into this budget, um, with the small increase that we can add to two point eight percent, and that's just property taxes, and the money that we're receiving, um, that we can increase two point eight percent, but it's not that much an increase when you're working, increasing, uh, when you're twenty-three percent, and when you have salaries, you have to consider sometimes no one, since you have to pay raises for five, six years, or, or if you come home, for six years, I think.
Six.
And, um, so things we just need to consider, and that's gonna free up quite a bit for out of budget, and it's not just in the general budget, it can be spread for out of budget for the fire here, for, um, the N B H, and the general budget, to help out. And I gave you guys all kind of a, this spreadsheet here that I made up, and it shows that your two thousand and twelve budget, your two thousand and thirteen, and then the fourteen budget right now, and over to the side, you're gonna see where, ours is pretty generic, you've got salaries, and then you have, um, your benefits, and then you have your other benefits, and just everything that we pretty much are obligated to do, and then over in the side, there's things that I would like to actually be more detailed about, and we have a line item called office supplies. Well, that office supply line item is not that much, about two thousand dollars a year, it's just spread between several departments, and, um, I would like to break it out more, the police gets so much, the fire gets so much, the ground gets so much, or office supplies, and get a little bit more detail, like other cities, they're just so generic. So I kind of, I'll throw this a little, few things here, we, we have, um, telephone expense, and our telephone expense is, right now, we have budgeted is eighteen hundred dollars. I mean, that's not much for a year when we have, um, phones coming in for all departments, and we have cell phones that we have now, that we have to pay for, and so there's just several things that I would really like you guys to consider, maybe change it up before we adopt the budget, but in the meantime, this is what is proposed. Here's your budget line form.
I have a question, first of all, for the system that we're on now for Go TV. We'll handle the line items, however we decide to break it down, so that won't be any additional cost, additional training?
Yes. It gives, uh, just a little type of thing, to change up your names and add a few line items, that you're talking a couple hours in the work, it's gonna be more accurate accounting.
And I would be willing to bet that the State Board of Accounts has probably put a little bug in your ear about doing this, or not?
Not really, but, you know, they're always, you know, mission, you know, you go with the places that what their budgets are like, and get a better idea of how they should be done.
It's a good way to track things, too.
It's a very good track tool. And right now, we do a lot of. And right now, we do a lot of spreadsheets that we are tracking, because we are so generic, also generalized. But on your budget one form, and if anybody wants to have one, there's a few up here for extras. So if anyone needs one, you're welcome to come get one. But that's your general budget, and at this time, the general budget is set for seven hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. And last year, it was at seven oh two, one forty-nine. Seven oh two, one forty-nine, last year's. And that's what it's gonna be this year. If I wanted to get up, guys, we're pretty close, but we're probably, we're the varsity state. Your local residents' street, that state funded income, revenue, it's at twelve thousand this year, it was thirteen-six last year. But my DNF, she did say that money can cut, so she cuts back some. So that you're probably not gonna get as much of a cut there. And then MBH? You're looking at one hundred and forty thousand, eight hundred dollars. Last year, we were at one hundred and forty, four eighty-four. So you can tell it's not without a whole lot there. And it's based on the percentages of under property tax, and sets somebody on that. So she thought we'd be pretty safe here, we shouldn't be too much to cut, if any, we're gonna be cut for general. Sorry, I'm on, actually, PAR. PAR is sixty-four thousand, nine twenty. And last year was sixty thousand, three eighty-one. Will get cut there, as the definition said. I was just trying to cover salaries, the perk increase, the health insurance, and your payroll taxes. That's the only thing we have in the budget except for PAR. So, but she is saying will definitely be any cut. Should get a thirty-seven, that last year, yes. And then your aviation? You are at fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred, and last year, we were at fifty-four thousand, fifty. And we'll be really close there. And then CCI? We're at nine thousand this year, again, that's estate revenue. And last year, we were at ninety-seven, thirty-eight, so, one thousand nine. And then CCD, that's just a set tax that we get, and it's set forty thousand. And normally, we get around a little bit more than that, than forty-nine, forty thousand, nine hundred, sometimes a little bit, nine hundred eighty-four dollars. It just varies on the property taxes again. It is, but you're gonna ask for that.
If we remove that, will that come off of this total budget?
It will come off, and so it'll come off your general budget, your general's at seven twenty-four fifty, it's gonna come off there, but it is gonna come off the grant total. And we can just bring that wherever we need. For instance, we have a hundred and seventy-five here, we get cut, say, twenty-five thousand, so basically, we have a hundred and forty-five left in to be included in the budget. And try to set up maybe a PAR budget, set up a little bit different budget from the general, get it more detailed. But your total budget is one million, forty-four thousand. Does anyone have any questions?
Do you need a motion, Amy?
No, just to detail.
No, I'm sorry, to detail the line items, when we get ready, when we get ready to do that, do you need a motion from us, or can you just go ahead and do that yourself?
We can, I can do it myself, but at the next, the actual adoption of a motion, you'll definitely be able to make it. Which is, second meeting in October is gonna be the adoption of the budget. Which is, October fifteenth meeting, maybe it's six fifteen. If you guys are favored that, I can definitely walk in your comments, and you help if you want to get.
It's easier to track.
Something easier to read, you know, where you can actually, instead of looking at, everybody's locked in one area here, and how much is this mine, how much is that someone else's? That's actually the other detail.
Every department should have their own.
Can we go and sort of date him for this car one type of meeting?
Yes, absolutely.
How many days, how many days that, how many weeks that, for?
I believe to students, two weeks, they divided it in two papers, at least, back to back, two weeks, and so.
Can we do that with different fact and canceling?
Yes, you can, any time you wish. And it can be a special, you can do that, or it's gonna be a couple of years.
What about the weeks to wait for each meeting? That's my two days.
Well, we have to have time to advertise it, so I don't think that's gonna give enough time, it's just two weeks. And you gotta do it back to back, each be, two papers, two in a row. I would say probably more like maybe the F of fifteen or sixteen.
Fifteen, is that right?
Sixteen, sixteen. But if you wanna do it before the adoption hearing? You wanna do it before, I would probably just do it for, for the, sorry.
We may have planning commission at that. The fifteenth, or excuse me, the sixteenth of October, I think, yeah, so maybe, look at the seventh. Okay, thank you. See, that's my birthday, I'm spacing that out, thank you, Sam. Well, I have that party.
October sixteenth?
Seven?
So it's sixteen.
Maybe six. I'm hearing six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
I'm sure you guys are all there, with Lynn, with Sixty-Nine, and who likes the nose, so she's not able to attend, but she did send her price report, so we're gonna, gonna try to let her through it. I'm sure I won't do as well as she does, but we'll try. Unsafe homes, rehabilitation date is set for September seventh, in College Properties, eight fifteen College Street, three ten Northeast Third Street, and two oh five Southeast Seventh Street. Taylor is going to report, let us know where this is.
First home in fifteen College Street, it's still the same, we're still actually processing it. The homeowners had quite a bit of contact near William West Town. Two oh five Southeast Second, that's the one I actually got to get in by the fire marshal. It's actually, it's like more trash piled outside, and somebody's getting worse. And that house, I've heard multiple complaints from baby, I've talked to them, the kids been running in and out of it. It's already fallen in, it's not structural, it's not at all. The, what was the other one?
Northeast Third.
That's the trailer. Trailers, I would, I'm not an construction type guy that knows, you know, how to put trailers and stuff, but I'd say taking out the main wall isn't very safe. On the west side of the house, he has two four by fours that's holding up the side wall. On the front side, he had taken out the main entrance and moved it down toward the west of the building, and has, I think, three or four four by fours holding up the metal. They're not actually nailed to the two by fours inside, the panel to hold that metal up. He did most drafts, that is a plus, I would say. There's a lot of D and spray paint and disturbing words on the outside of the structure.
Have you gotten with, with Lonnie Schraub?
Not really.
That's probably on to you next time. I guess he's still living in there.
Yeah, as far as I know, he's still living in it, I haven't actually attempted to go to the house, to see if it lives there, but.
I would, I would talk with Lonnie about the health issues and stuff, and maybe we could go.
Hey, we just take the wind, pitch it, pull it up to the back of the trucks and pull it out, so we'll get it. That's all I got for you.
On the eight fifteen college, what's your recommendation there, do you think we should try to demolish it, or give it another chance to?
Eight fifteen, I think we should demolish it, because we, we've been owning that property for, I mean, I've been here for, received an home in here for two years, this is my first year as a, a full time employee. I've been going for years now, and I've been living, the other one, it's been going longer. There's actually a date there behind it now, there's been a horse, snakes, and lot of animals inside there.
That's one of them, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Do any of these three proprietors respond?
And what Lynn's recommending here is counseling the motion to allow the town attorney to send orders to property owners and persons of ICF, three, six, seven, dash, nine, next five, state, and park management. Can you rehabilitate, demolish, or rid of all destruction for ninety days, and just, it's just a next step, don't take. Everybody's second. Okay, who officially started that? Gary Vernon?
Yes.
Mark Jim?
Yes.
Mike Parkin?
Yes.
Lynn Lashgrove, yes, and Mettis. So, the next part of the agenda is Mr. Darby's property. We had given an extension of time to rehabilitate his property, he had himself the time of seventeen, to let us know where he stood. Don't believe he's here, but I'm gonna speak out here and just say that since that house is close to my house, I can't tell you, he's been out there nightly, tearing down four by four, and a lot of the back of it is off. Some of the trees are gone, Jenny, help me out here.
Yeah, he actually is making progress, and that was one of our, you know, things we wasn't had, was to give time and progress. I mean, as long as he's making progress, we need to work with him while he's doing that. I know he's had previous health issues and explain, but he is at least out there doing work to the structure, so. And if it was possible, if he did have the financial standpoint to make the house presentable, or the building itself presentable, and he could show that, then, as long as you are okay with it, I'd be okay with him actually going forward with that.
I am, I was over there as well, I didn't know what, absolutely.
I think if he took the back cap off, and he actually redid the roof, and he put siding on it, it actually looked like a decent structure, it'd be reasonable.
When he was here, he was talking about the front part he used for storage.
There's no way, structurally.
Structurally, yes. I would be for, yeah, this is, this is, I mean, progress, I mean, he's out working on it, so.
So you have an extension then, so, so the next meeting should be October, the term.
Hopefully, we do then, if we respond.
You get with me tomorrow, we'll try to make some kind of contact to realize, or get with them.
I'll second.
Gary Vernon?
Yes.
Mark Jim?
Yes.
Mike Parkin?
Yes.
Lynn Lashgrove?
Yes.
Jerry Mettis? Mr. Dinninger? Your hearing is set for September the third, on two different properties, on A B Sport, and then four eleven West Hamlet. And then if you were to report back today, let us know what your plan match is.
Okay, thank you. I guess if Rose is looking, I think Rose, she's my guest here, she is representing the building for sale on the square, so, okay, thank you. Do you wanna report for John Collins? Last time you guys asked me to have somebody expect, you wanna go ahead and do that now, or you wanna wait, or has he talked to you guys? I don't know, you wanna just do it on the third?
No, September the third, is when you're here, he must be here, September the third, and he'll be asking to come back and report to us, what your plan match was, and, and financial stability as far as, what you, how are you gonna commit what was set to the project? If you're gonna rehabilitate, or if you're gonna demolish, or what we're doing here.
Okay, thank you.
You tell us what you're doing.
You got a euro.
Well, John Collins looked at the greenhouse in the end of the water square. He said the one, the greenhouse is stable, worthwhile fixing up, credit to the community, given the historic structure. The other one, he said it is possible, if I want to spend enough money to do that, but that's, that's the it. John mentioned that there's already stores for sale, and it's where they're not being purchased by anybody, so. John thought that, I probably shouldn't say, but we asked him, had somebody look at it, and he said, it, it, it's not gonna collapse, the store, but it needed more, more work, obviously, and John, and so.
I, I did talk to him.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, he said stabilize it like it should be, it's costing gonna be twenty-seven, ninety dollars, but then you have the inside, and then your exterior work, so. You know, if you want to spend a couple hundred thousand on it, it's you, but there's one on the square that just got done, and they can't sell for seventy, so.
Well, you guys have a historic down here, you've got the only other historic quarter on this side of the square. And you know, the history is, is the same with the builder, I know you want modern, a, a, a modern shopping environment, and I just think by tearing the buildings down, especially on the square. places like Warden have, you can't tear anything down on the square because it's all historic and the state has it. So, no, you can't tear anything down, but I know you guys don't have that, but I'm just saying somewhere down the line. If you tear my building down, then you've got every season falling, and I pitched it last week in the wall. And that would never pass any kind of scrutiny. I'm just saying, you guys shouldn't scrutinize me more than anybody else on the square. I don't think any old building was.
We're not what's modern, we're something that's not gonna fall over on people in the next building. You know, I mean, it's not a, it's not gonna be a shopping complex, because nobody can walk inside of it, so you know that as well as I do.
It's been deemed unsafe by the?
Yeah.
Fire marshal.
Fire marshal.
At this point, the foundation or the town is offering twenty thousand, you know, and go from there. You guys know this, just put Johnny Collins on it, you don't want anybody, okay? So, the foundation is involved with it, they're trying to join.
They may be, we're not.
No, I know.
So, you don't have plans at this point to refurbish the greenhouse yet?
So, put the new roof on, go ahead, put the porch back on, and that's gonna put on the, on the square on, on the square. We have a buyer looking at it, and I would of course recommend, as my lawyer said, be sure and tell whatever your board is considering. So, I suggested that the person come here and listen to some of the comments and what, you know, what needs to be done to the building to bring it so everybody is happy, conduct, electric, okay?
They're gonna follow them the same as you are regardless?
Yeah, right, well, I know that sucks. But I thought we should at least tell any prospective buyer to come and talk to you and see what, you know, what your hands or what you feel about them. Maybe some people would be more affluent, I have, if you want to know their credit, I have seventy five thousand on everyone. But, you know, I'm not banking on that, so, one time somebody said, oh, they want to know if I was financially solid or whatever. Of course, I paid all the property tax on the whole year, I always said, it's never been over there, whatever.
So, what are your plans? That's like, I mean, that's.
For the store?
Yeah. What are they? And we just can't let it keep going on and on and on.
Well, last time they gave you two weeks to fix it up, you know.
Now, we didn't give you two weeks to fix it up, we gave you two weeks to come back with a plan of action.
Tell you what my plan would be.
Yeah, and this is second week, and we haven't come up with a plan of action yet, so.
Well, I would like to say that along with you guys taking it should be going down to make this world better or whatever, no building class or whatever. And then the foundation is involved with it, possibly building something.
I know what you're saying.
So, John?
That's beside.
What would you like to say?
Well, I mean, it's not stable structure to begin with.
Well, I put your sales in under it.
Yeah, but it's still not stable structure, so.
It just has to be compliant with, you know, like we said before, if you ever want to open it up for another store, Gary House is the one you're gonna have to make that.
Right. The electric part is not in there.
Electric structure.
What is his position?
He's an Indiana State Building Code Fire Marshal, Indiana Department of Homeland Security. This is his area.
And where is his office?
Indianapolis. I think he's, correct if I'm wrong, Dutch, he's looked at the building?
Yes.
And what was his findings?
Unsafe.
Therein lies the problem.
Well, I need to negotiate with the foundation, since they've already given it through John. It sounds like they contacted you guys, but you had no word from them or?
No, we're out of it.
Okay, so, do we want to give him an extension, we're gonna come back and?
When does the foundation meet?
Let's give him the next meeting, maybe we can have something a little more concrete on his plate.
Sure, we should have contacted them, and then John is just telling me second hand.
I'll, if you got your number, I'll give Bobby Lamb, and I'll have him contact you.
Okay, very, okay, thanks.
And then in two weeks.
Okay, you'll be meeting in two years?
Well, next meeting, then you can come.
It's September the third, that's the next one?
September first.
October first.
October first, okay. Thank you. Rosalie, you have any you want to comment, or would you like to say anything?
No, I, I have, have the property listed for, I guess, over a year now.
Yes, you're going a second year.
Right, and, and Mr. Denteer has gone through the bad years of two thousand and seven and on up to now, and things are getting better. I think that you all, and you all probably realize this too, that there's gonna be more people interested in opening up businesses now. And so, he's got a better market to look forward to, and it's a wonderful location. I'm originally from Washington County, I always came to Paoli to go around the square and go to the movies, and so, this is, I feel very fond of Paoli, glad to have the listing, and I can understand what Mr. Denteer's gone through. And so, I think, I know that he will do the best that he can do for the property.
Well, I wondered about the sins of the people of the past, and Darwin Appel, I'm only, wouldn't let me in it for over a year and a half. A couple of closing took us a number of reasons, but anyway, I have all of that at that store, fifty foot loads of various types of debris. So, I mean, we cut off, maybe this boy doesn't remember when our building didn't poison ivy just growing on the front, across the whole side of the thing, and we did paint it, and of course, we got rid of the poison ivy and tried to, to, unfortunately, had a subcontractor that, that I forbid to touch the front of the building, and he went in there anyway, took out my modern door, put that idiotic thing in there after I told him I was gonna fire him into it, knowing you can concentrate just on the new cells. And John did look at my new cells in the, in there, but the other part of the store has an old foundation under it, it was a cellar. But anyway, they'll be fine, I'll, I'll talk to you at your next meeting, and we'll see. Thank you. Thank you for giving us a tour.
Mark Jim?
Yes.
Lynn Lashbrook, yes, Jerry Meadows?
Did you have anything else?
Yeah, she was more on her data. I'm still being Lynn here. Street who's on your ordinance, it was presented at the last meeting, we settled it, did you wanna move forward with it?
I read, I don't see anything that I would suggest adding to or remitting.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion to approve, I don't know what ordinance number it is.
Actually, two thousand thirteen dash six, two six.
That one.
Second? Gary Barnett?
Yes.
Mark Jim?
Yes.
Mike Parkin?
Yes.
Lynn Lashbrook? I have to abstain on that, I haven't read it, sorry. Jerry Meadows? And the next on the agenda is the drainage project. Eric personally, we've commented reportedly that the release of funds, a letter from Oprah for the drainage project was sent Friday, September third, and the town would now enter into contract and start construction following the next steps. Council needs to make a motion to award the bid to the apparent low responsive responsible bidder, who's changing company incorporated, for the base bid less than duck alternate A one for a total contract price of seven eighty-four, nine forty-three, eighty-four. Seven hundred eighty-four thousand, nine forty-three, eighty-four. We have a motion on that too.
Do we have a motion?
I saw Lynn.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay.
I've got that letter due, I'll get it tomorrow here.
Gary Barnett?
Yes.
Mark Jim?
Yes.
Mike Parkin?
Yeah.
Lynn Lashbrook, Jerry Meadows? And as far as a pre-construction conference, they have set September the twenty-third, two thousand thirteen, at one P M at the Paoli Town Hall. So, here's everyone, September twenty-third?
What time?
At one o'clock. September twenty-third is Wednesday. October, I'm in October, sorry.
Here.
Yes, here. October twenty-third? No, it's September twenty-third, it's probably been October, so, that's September twenty-third, Monday. It's probably Monday coming up. And if you guys are prepared, definitely need a motion to step that date. That is the pre-construction conference with you. Make a motion for the date and time. Gary Barnett?
Yes.
Mark Jim?
Yes.
Mike Parkin?
Yes.
Lynn Lashbrook, yes, Jerry Meadows? Justice is here, if the contractors can forward insurance certificates of bond by the end of the week, we can sign contract issue notice to proceed at the pre-construction conference. Eric will be at the commission meeting tomorrow morning to discuss their request to defend the guardrail at retention base in sight. FYI, there are facility conflicts that will prevent us from being able to install the guardrail, so then, so we may have some discussion on other options. So, if anyone from the town council might have sent, we're not obligated, but I welcome. Next business here is CDL reverse, great bargain agreement. She has drawn up a agreement between the town and the employees as far as if we go ahead and pay for all your testing and stuff. And the only thing on here that she would like to know is, on the second page here, it says, if for some reason they don't agree or they don't stay at least one year period, then if CDL employees fail to complete testing, we have to reimburse the town in some seven hundred and fifty dollars. And she's taking into consideration of what the testing would cost and the timeout as far as from their labor work, the labor involved there, and then the vehicle involved. And she just, those numbers aren't too bad, there's a fifty, then it's going to pass, of course, CDL test, and it'll be a thousand, and then the blow tax, the second test, and it's four hundred. So, it took him to a sense, it could be as much as four hundred if they had. Are you guys okay with those figures?
And the time for the month?
They have to stay with us one year. So, you never pull it over here. The actual testing is a hundred dollars each time they go, and you have to consider also that their timeout from their labor work. So, they're, they're, they're timing hours, they're wearing terrible vehicle, and I was pulling over there, heel. If you think they're a little steep, then she said, we highlight it, if you wanna re, repeat this.
I'd like to consider tailing it, do some research on it, maybe with some other, must do. Do you pay for their CDL physicals? They have to have a physical every two years.
Yes.
Does the town pay for it?
Yes.
They do?
Yes. And she wanted me to remind everyone, the Paoli Plan Commission next meeting is October ninth at five P M. It's a little further, I didn't do that earlier, sorry. Sit to the attorney?
Did you have?
Yes, I did. On me. Mr. Lamb had sent me this letter, meaning signed by the council president. It is to send on to the Division of Historic Preservation, the Indiana Department of Natural Resources, to let them know that, let's see, Andrew Uplands, E D C plans to use grant dollars to improve Uplands E D C from the Orange County Delta Commission at one twelve West Water Street for the facade preservation rep. Restoration program on the Fort House Square, property, property addresses and spoken work for the program are listed individually and attached to A on the correspondence. This is just a letter that they do have to send up to the board, society, and then you just need to sign it. But then they have to have.
Does the foundation have the letter, or has the president signed it?
Gary Barnett?
Yes.
Mark Jim?
Yes.
Mike Parkin?
Yes.
Lynn Lashbrook?
Yes.
Jerry Meadows? Meadows Architecture has presented a bill for the construction document phase and four twenty-nine, four sixty, and just need somebody to tell me that part of it is finished, and the motion is fake.
The document phase, what's that?
That's getting the construction drawings down, and the mixed phase is bidding, and then construction administration.
So, we got, we got, how much percentage is left on the contract?
Day ten percent, if I read that right, then with?
I mean, yeah, I recall the, the construction documents is the bulk of the work, and that's thirty percent, and that's what's been going for now. And the bidding phase is five percent, and then the construction administration's five percent. And the construction administration isn't available until close out of the project, and the bidding phase is in progress.
I guess, where I'm at is, we haven't got the state design release yet, right? And that goes along with this, this bill. The way contracts grow up is that if we don't get the grant or whatever, then, you know, the money, I guess, stops or whatever, so I'm thinking to myself, I kind of want to protect both of us. I mean, I, I myself would like to have this stand on it, you know, and that's just to protect us and protect you as well.
Well, it's, regardless of whether it gets built or if it's work, and when we renegotiated that contract, we all agreed that it would be based, the piece had to be based on the previous contract, so that's why some of the building done for work, and I'll be getting invoices from engineers. The, the design release, that, that'll be coming soon, but I still need to get a, I need to get a check for submitting the drawings, a couple of signatures, and we'll submit them tomorrow most likely. And I called today and asked about, I told them what kind of project we had, and that the fire station was hit by a storm, and the good news was that they thought they could expedite that because we're building a building for life safety, and just as long as, once we file it, we should make that known, and maybe they could turn that around in three to seven days, as I was told, within days. So, news is pretty good as long as we did our job correctly.
Well, I'm just, I mean, I'm just trying to protect you and us.
How does that protect me?
Well, because this, I mean, if something goes wrong in between Indianapolis and here.
You're only getting paid. If something's wrong, getting paid.
Well, I mean, I mean, this is contingent on the state release, right? That's what, that's what I'm asking.
That's contingent upon, from what I remember on the contract that we talked about is all contingent upon release of funds from Oprah, and that's, it wasn't worded very well. I had several discussions about it. And that's, it wasn't worded very well, um, I had several discussions about it and time ran out and I signed it. So we talked about the fees being established from the previous bill we paid, the previous contract. Because I asked if that could be put into the new contract, cause there wasn't time. So, um, I'm just, I'm presenting the bill, that's, that's, well, it's got paid now.
I understand Mike's, Mike's concern, it's, it's a good concern.
Yeah, I just don't want, if, if something happens and, you know, it's only got nine thousand, twenty eight hundred left on the contract, I'm afraid that if something happens, cause I, the way things been going.
And I agree, look, where I, where I differ a little bit is, uh, that would, if that happens, then that would. That would negate anything else in my opinion, so I don't know if, if up to this point, if.
Yeah, the words are very pointed.
Right, I don't, if there's a gray area, I don't know if, if, cause I've never done this before.
Right.
And I don't know if that includes state approval or not.
Right.
I would think probably, probably not, you know, but after that, I would think we would deal with.
Um, I would like to, in the general.
You know what I'm saying?
I know exactly what you're saying.
I think we'll have state approval before that's what comes due and, uh, we, uh.
Could you go seven days, Dave?
Pardon me?
Could you go seven days or no?
I understand what.
Without payment?
Oh, yeah, that's not due until thirty days after I build it.
Okay, so we may have state approval by then.
Right, yeah, exactly, yeah, I mean, you know, if, uh, but I mean, that was the trouble with, what we talked about on the, on that contract.
So it's net thirty then, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, there's, it don't, so we're cool.
The, uh, I just wanna mention on the, the contract was continued upon that we get the grant money. Well, I had really no control over that.
Right.
And that was poorly worded and I signed it because everybody's saying, sign it.
Well, I don't, I don't, I, I think it's a moot point, Dave, I think everything, you know, in the sense it's thirty, net thirty.
Yes, what I'm saying though is.
I'm thinking we're gonna know something's said, but I think it's.
Is if I, if, if for some reason they didn't provide the grant for whatever reason, they, the society went bankrupt and they didn't do it.
Yeah.
I think that bill is still due because I don't have the work.
You got it.
Okay. Do you have a paper for us to sign this in? Yeah, uh, I've got a, uh, these things here, I'll just scan it. Okay?
Oh, yeah.
On the, uh, the design release, um.
I'd like to.
I did look at, like, I filed it online and that's still a possibility, but it's a hassle and you have to download on there and sometimes you don't, like, like, those specifications. It's a big file, it's difficult to download all in one, one, it's just, all of those things are easy and quick, it's not. So, and then you don't always know if they got everything, so when you send it, send drawings and specifications and permits, so you know you've sent it. So I'd rather do it that way and, um, uh, who I have here, my, I'm gonna make a copy. Well, first of all, I guess I'll mention that after the pre-bid meeting, kind of a busy time to put the pre-bid meeting minutes, list the people that were there. Um, uh, answer some of the major questions and then of course, you're gonna, during the process, people emailing me on a few questions here and there, so I'll answer those. And you have a few addenda, addenda, the first one just being the pre-bid meeting itself and some of the questions. Um, uh, I have five all together and they're all pretty minor, um. One is the standing seam level roof, the premium roof, and we decided to land the standard roof. Because the standing seam would not require, uh, doors to be bored everywhere, so just the budget's taken it. We decide, when we decide on a contract, if you still have that option, I'm sure they'll, they'll give you a price for letting you explore that. A few of the others were, uh, just picking out the drawings and seeing if I had anything that needed rushed up. And on the place I had full connection that wasn't required because that's an old note from, I didn't see it before. And I've got these in them, and they can do their copies of yourself. And given that, um, I mentioned before, I looked at it, filed it online, and so. Um, this is the application for construction design release. Um, one has to fill out a detailed, the design professionals on the jobs, every civil, architectural and mechanical. Um, and Eric can sign one as the president, the owner, and, uh, or sign each one with, I suppose, same draw on each one that is sent out. And we'll fill those out. Um, right here is the, uh, schedule fees for, uh, site built construction. And there was something to try to figure out, but basically, there's a seventy five dollar, uh, five theme, but it's just upfront. Uh, the fees are based on fifty cents of squirt foot of the building or neighborhood of, of what you're going through. But the, the processing fee is, including the course, we're eight thousand one hundred and thirty two gross square feet of building at, uh, point zero five, uh, dollars, which is four hundred and sixty dollars and sixty cents. And then they're kind of dating it, uh, on construction inspection fee, uh, some towns, a little one of them, they're paramount, they've not had. Organization set up with the buildings are constantly monitored by, uh, design, uh, I'm sorry, spell official. I'm not saying exact words, but we're over the, this, we have to pay additional, uh, ten cents of squirt foot on that, so that's eight thousand one hundred and thirty two gross square feet of building times, uh, point one. Dollars, I guess, ten cents is, of course, eight hundred and twenty cents, so, uh, this is, uh, we need a check for one thousand two hundred and ninety four dollars and a cent. But that's the, uh, Department of Homeland Security, and then that'll go in with the, uh, application for construction design release. And then we wait, hope it comes back.
Until you say the days.
Yeah, uh-huh.
All right.
Because, uh, I mean, everybody wants to, you know, narrow that gray area, library, certain, well, we did the construction design release and time for. And so there has been a few of us, uh, projects coming in and they said it's been waiting time, it's getting a little bit longer, so that concerned me, so when I called. Um, it's one of those dudes who are like, well, I can say so before, that because we had fire and storm, we don't have a fire station right now, so they would, uh, expedite that and. We turn around and three, seven business days, once they pay the, you know, so it's a lot of questions.
And forgive me, I, I'm, I'm, I'm backpedaling just a little bit. Are you okay with waiting two weeks for your bill?
Yeah.
Actually, it's net thirty anyway.
Right.
So it was good, I didn't hear all that very good, so, okay.
And hopefully we'll have a construction design release. And a little bit of precision towards, um.
The first fee was what, a nickel or two cents?
It's all on here, you can talk about for these.
Davis, would you give those to Amy so she can write those down first?
I may accept for her, this is for her use and, so, they, I'll, I'll just leave it to Natalie Warren.
Yep.
Also, I'll bring a few tomorrow, there's a commitment, we have, we have, they had on, on file with the town. And then, um, John Collins is the only one that even had email, we said we need to put him, put in as well. And, and we can look at who they are and other than, it's going to be, well, I guess, we need to play phone calls from extra vendors and. And get some total questions, but not too many, so. So, pardon? You need a motion maybe for?